My name is George Moriarty. I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Corporate and Community Education at Northern Essex Community College, and I'm honored to serve as the moderator for tonight's important School Committee Candidate Forum. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the Haverhill Education Coalition and the Haverhill Education Foundation. I also want to thank HC Media for allowing us to use the studio here at Harbor Place, this brand-new studio which has tremendous things here available for us. They are broadcasting the show over the cable TV station live, and they're also livestreaming it over the Internet. So individuals will be able to see this and gain from what the Haverhill Education Coalition. It's a grassroots organization whose members are parents, educators, and community leaders, and their mission is to promote and advance high-quality education. The Coalition carries out its mission by sharing information, by engaging in advocacy work, and by encouraging active parental and civic engagement, and I think tonight's forum is a perfect example of the mission of the Education Coalition. The Education Coalition also focuses on three fundamental principles and goals that they are working on. The first is excellence, the second is transparency, and the third is accountability. And tonight's forum is one of a series of events which is intended to further those goals. Let me take a moment now and introduce the candidates who are here with us this evening. Start to my immediate right. Richard Rosa is a father, husband, attorney, and local business owner who has lived and owned a business in Haverhill for more than 20 years. He graduated from Northeastern University School of Journalism in 1991, and he attended law school at night while working full-time, graduating from New England Law in Boston in 1995. Rich is a licensed attorney for nearly 22 years, and he is the co-founder and co-owner of an exclusive buyer agent real estate company located in Haverhill. Next to him is Richard Smith, who earned a PhD in English from the University of Florida and is a career educator with over 30 years of experience. He is currently a working school teacher in the Stonem Public Schools, and he teaches computer science classes at the high school and the middle school levels. He has also worked in a private Catholic school and various colleges. Richard's twin boys just finished going through the whole public education system here in Haverhill, from preschool to 12th grade, and one of his students finished as the valedictorian of the class of 2000. Maggie Aketti. Paul is a lifelong resident of Haverhill, a former soccer, hockey, little league coach, and a small business owner. Paul currently is an attorney partner at Sheehan, Chivoni, Jutris, and Maggie Aketti LLP. In addition, he also serves as a member of the Haverhill School Committee, as chairman of the Greater Haverhill Chamber of Commerce, and chairman of Bethany Communities. Just one more. Katrina Hobbs Everett is a woman of faith, mother to seven children, proud union wife, community leader, and youth advocate. She has spent the past 20 years dedicated to improving the lives of others, specializing in youth and children's services. Her area of expertise are child welfare, trauma, addictions, mental health, and family and community engagement. Katrina was born and raised in Haverhill. She has a Bachelor of Science in Human Services from UMass Boston with a minor in youth work. She has a drug and alcohol abuse counseling certificate from Northern Essex Community College, and she is currently the CEO of Power of Self-Education. Ryan Siradello. She received her undergraduate degree from the University College in County Cork, Ireland. She earned a master's degree in education at Salem State University, and she has worked for eight years as a teacher in the Haverhill Public School System, and she currently serves on the Haverhill School Committee. So thank you very much for being with us here tonight. I want to just talk a little bit about the framework of tonight's program. The forum will engage the candidates in three broad topics. First topic is reducing the dropout rate and improving the graduation rate. The second is achieving proficiency in literacy by 3rd grade. The third area is providing professional development opportunities for teachers. The format for the questioning will be two rounds of questions for each topic. The first round will focus on the nature of the problem, and the second round will focus and ask candidates for a solution to those problems. Each candidate will have one minute for each response, and I should note that I have the unpleasant but necessary duty of making sure you keep to that time. We also have a timekeeper here who will be alerting the candidates to when you have 15 seconds go and about five seconds to go, so please help us do our job and try to stay within the time limit that was established here as part of the forum. At the end of the rounds of questions, each candidate will have two minutes to offer a closing statement. I should note that the seating positions of the candidates and the order of the questions that are being asked was determined ahead of time by the drawing of lots. I should also want to introduce our two renemen. He's an economist, and he's creator of the benchmark HaverhillSchools.com website. And Joanna Dix is a teacher and high school parent, and they will both be asking the questions this evening. So let's get started, and I believe Tom, you're going to ask the first question?
Yes, our first set of questions has to do with the dropout and graduation rates. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education statistics show that Haverhill has a higher dropout rate and lower graduation rates compared to similar Massachusetts cities. While dropout rates have declined statewide and in Haverhill, Haverhill's dropout rate remains well above the state average and those of comparable cities. I'll be asking questions going, for this round going left to right, starting at the far end. Maura Ryan Siradello, what do you believe are the contributing factors underlying Haverhill's high dropout rate and graduation rates?
Thank you. First of all, I believe that it begins at home, starting at the early ages on, infancy to preschool, and then elementary into middle and to high school. And parental involvement absolutely is key to keeping children into maintaining their grades and graduating from high school. Unfortunately, we do have some students who don't always have the opportunity as others to stay in school, and they need to go out and seek to provide for their families or themselves and get jobs. So I would say starting at home would be key, and finding more funding and ways to get counseling to help these individuals not only be able to work on the outside, but to maintain their education and become graduates. I'm proud to say that, you know, as a current member of the Haverhill School Committee, with three children that attend the Haverhill School System, we had added $25,000,000 dollars has been added to the budget to help reduce in the dropout rate. So those are some of the things that we take very serious, and as a mother of three children, again, I want to address those issues.
Thank you. Katrina Hobbs Everett, some may argue that Haverhill dropout rates result in part from inconsistent or inadequate funding of programs to support students at risk of dropping out. Do you agree with that, and please explain why or why not?
To an extent, we have had programs in the past that have effectively brought students back into the district and provided services for them within the district that has helped them to graduate, which funding has been cut for. I do feel that that is part of the problem, but that's certainly not the full scope of the problem for sure.
Okay. Thank you. Paul Maggie Aketti, Haverhill's 9th grade dropout rates have been particularly, particularly high in the last two years. Why do you think students in Haverhill are more likely to drop out in the first year of high school rather than later?
Well, first of all, I think one of the biggest problems we have is we don't invest enough in early childhood education. I'm proud of the fact that back in 2010, I fought really hard to get all-day kindergarten for all of our students. We need to do that one step earlier, and we have to get preschool for all our students. If you invest in them at an early age, they're less likely to drop out when they get older. But we can invest in that now, but we still have to do the triage statement, the triage treatment at the high school level. So we need to have guidance counselors working together with social workers, working together with community groups to reach these children in their homes. We need to find out what the home dynamic is, and we have to make sure we get not only the students, but the families, the services they need, and we had stressed to them the importance of education, and we do everything we can to get those students in school every day. We have tremendous teachers in this city that can work wonders if the kids are in school every day. We have to ensure that that happens.
Okay, thank you. Richard Smith, what kinds of supports do at-risk students and their families need to avoid dropping out and to succeed through to graduation?
I think we've pointed out that students cater at 3. We need 3rd grade proficiency in reading. So I think we need intervention very early on if we can help parents how to be parents and how to help their students read, because really, that those early years from 0 to 5 before they come to us are critical, as Maura was suggesting. So if we can make outreach, as Paul was suggesting, to the parents and help them, you know, know that just having reading material in the house can make a difference. That alone can make a difference. Showing, modeling reading for them, you know, these are things that we need to help parents with.
Okay, thank you. Richard Rosa, do you believe it's realistic to expect Haverhill graduation rates and dropout rates to be at levels consistent with other gateway cities and similar income, with similar income and demographic characteristics?
Absolutely. We have to do that. We owe it to those students, and we owe it to the people of this city. A Northeastern University study has indicated that 80% of the people incarcerated in the United States are high school dropouts. About 50% of people on public assistance are high school dropouts. And if the class of 2011, if that class, if the dropouts in that class alone are costing us $154 billion in income that one year for dropping because they dropped out of high school. In addition, each dropout costs taxpayers $292,000 on average. So it's not just an educational issue, it's not just a public, it's also a public safety issue, it's an economic issue, and it's a tax issue, and it's something that we need to work on quickly and help these kids because it's really, it's important. It's an important issue for the students, and it's an important issue for our city.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to turn now to questions related to the solution. We're going to start one slot over and go in the same order and then back to the first position. Katrina Hobbs Everett, as a school committee member, what will you do to ensure that the school administration?
So one of the things that I'm looking at is the fact that the school committee has the ability to form committees with citizens and to actually go in and investigate, you know, how things are working in the schools. And so, you know, by having the relationship of talking to the administrators on a regular basis, that's a way of knowing what's going on, you know, to find out the reviews and to be able to build a more accountability, to build accountability with the district goals, to make sure that they're actually happening, and making that consistent with speaking with families and with youth to make sure, again, that those things are actually happening as parents. That happens from relationships and being consistent with making sure that we know what's going on in our schools.
Thank you. Paul Maggie Aketti, as a school committee member facing tough decisions on budget priorities, how will you ensure that funds are available to address the dropout issue?
Well, that's always a difficult issue, but what I do every single year is I meet privately with principals, with counselors, and with the superintendent, and we work together to try to find every penny we can to invest in various issues. A lot of this is done behind the scenes, and people don't really see it, but there's a lot of work that goes into the budget creation within the school community itself, and as a school committee members, we can cooperate with them, and we can try to allocate funds. One of the things that we can do is we can go through the budget, and we can identify programs that can be merged with other programs. You can work within the existing budget to find money that's available to invest in high priorities like the dropout rate. So that's one of the ways you can do it. And the other thing you can do is make sure that we're seeking out as many grants as we can to invest in the problem to come up with solutions.
Thank you. Richard Smith, how do you believe the school committee can best hold the school administration, including the superintendent, accountable for performance measures such as dropout rates?
First of all, there needs to be a strategic plan put into place. There hasn't been a strategic plan since 2014. It was cited in the 2016 May DESI report to say there needs to be a strategic plan. There's still not a strategic plan. The school committee is responsible for overseeing evaluation of the superintendent, so if the superintendent's not doing his job, he needs to be held accountable. It's as simple as that, I think.
Okay, thank you. Richard Rosa, do you believe a dropout prevention program should be a regular line item in the school budget? Why or why not?
I do, and the reason why I do is because we already know of two programs that work. You know, I've talked, I've spoken to teachers, and they have told me that the Halt program, the alternative school, is a successful program, and that they know students who have gone into it and have, who were at risk of dropping out and have graduated. We also know that a few years back, our dropout rate was declining, and that was because of a federal grant that had the YES program. That grant has expired, and that program is no longer being funded, and as a consequence to that, we're probably going to see an uptick in dropout rate. So we know that there are things that we could do that are effective that could improve the dropout rate. We need to make sure we fund those things and that we, you know, are clear that in the budget, those have to be funded, those have to be priorities.
Okay, thank you. Maura Ryan Siradello, would you support using school funds for social workers to engage at-risk, at-risk students and their parents in the home to prevent dropouts?
Absolutely. I believe that's critical. I think there definitely should be more funded added to having more counselors in the schools, in each schools, not just one, but depending on the amount of students, several. And this is, again, going back to with the dropout rate, providing services for, you know, mental health issues, behavioral issues, and again, being present and having people go into the homes and find out what's causing these at-risk students to, with the areas of difficulty with the graduation dropout rate. So, but yes, I do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much to the candidates for round one there, and the questions that we will be moving into the second round, which is early reading proficiency, the literacy question, and Joanna Dix is going to be handling that, those questions.
All right, thank you. So the Annie E. Casey Foundation in Kids Count published a report that said, "Reading proficiently by the end of 3rd grade can be a make-or-break benchmark in a child's educational development." It states that children who get to 4th grade without learning to read proficiently are on the dropout track. So my first question is going to start over here with Mr. Rosa and go the opposite direction. So, Mr. Rosa, what factors do you believe contribute to student failure to read proficiently by grade four?
Well, I've spoken to teachers about this, and one of the responses that I continually get is that they feel like the programs, literacy programs, and we're not just talking about reading, but we're also talking about writing programs, are not consistent. They feel like that programs change often and that they're not provided with professional development so they could be proficient in teaching these programs. So that, I think, is a cause for not having children read at that age, which is critical because you have to, you know, learn to read first in order to read to learn.
Great, thank you. All right, Mr. Smith, different student populations at Tilton, Constantino, and Bradford Elementary, for example, present different needs and challenges for achieving reading proficiency. How can the school committee identify the barriers to reading proficiency and how they may differ among Haverhill's elementary schools?
One of the things that the DESI report talks about is a need for professional development and differentiated learning. So this is one way that we could address that issue. As Rich mentioned, there's not a cohesive curriculum for literacy education, so this is something that needs to be taken up, and we've had inequitable distribution of resources. So there's been literacy coaches at the four big elementary schools, but not at the other elementary schools. So there needs to be equitable distribution of resources and, you know, consistent application of these programs, as Rich suggested.
Great, thank you. Mr. Maggie Aketti, to assess the need for programs and budgets to address reading proficiency and to monitor progress, what information does the school committee need from the superintendent on a regular and timely basis?
Well, we need to, we need to hear feedback directly from the teachers, I believe. Whenever you're dealing with these kinds of issues, you have to get feedback from the people on the front lines, and those are our teachers. So one thing that I consistently ask Mr. Scully for, and he provides me some feedback, is what are the teachers seeing in their classroom? What are the teachers asking for in their classroom? When I go around and I visit the schools, I get very personal with my communications. I try to assess the students in the classroom. I try to assess what the teachers are doing, what their aides are doing, and I talk to them, and I say, "What can we give you to make your job better, more efficient? How can we reach these kids to make sure they're reading by grade three?" It's probably one of the most important things that we can do is to get them reading by grade three. I'm very proud of the fact that the first year I became a school committee member, I donated books to the reading library at the then Kroll School because they had, didn't have a reading library. So Karen Peabody was building it, and I actually donated three packets to her.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hobbs Everett, what factors in the home environment and community may contribute to delay reading skills? What challenges do these create for schools, and what can the school committee do about that?
Adult illiteracy, so the parents that cannot read, addictions, mental health, substance abuse, poverty. I could go on and on. There are several factors that go on in a home that contribute to, you know, 3rd shift, 2nd shift parent schedules, transportation issues that prevent parents from bringing their kids to preschool, income issues that prevent parents from getting their kids into preschool, affordability of preschool. Literally, I feel like there's a laundry list of things that contribute to that. As far as what the school committee can do, my biggest push is for family engagement, and family engagement is not us telling parents what to do. It is tapping into the resources that the parents naturally have and how they educate and engage with their children to find out the strengths of that home, not the problems of the home, but the strengths of the home.
Great, thank you very much. Ms. Ryan Siradello, how can the school administration and the school committee best support our teachers to help make advances in reading proficiency?
Well, I believe that by providing more teachers with access to resources, funding number one would be the first thing. Getting them the proper resources to get through with the parents and work with the parents to teach the children, as we know that when, in elementary school, children grades from preschool to 2nd grade, they're learning to read, and then after that, when they hit 3rd grade, it's their, that's when they start learning their reading to learn. So we need to catch them at the earlier age groups. And so, working with the families and providing the teachers with the proper resources so they can reach out to these parents is going to be key to getting children to succeed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so the next set of questions are going to be on reading proficiency, but they're going to be solution-based questions, and we're going to just move one over and start with Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, will you ask the superintendent to specify an approach to achieving reading proficiency by the end of grade three for all Haverhill students as part of a strategic plan in the coming year?
Absolutely. I've mentioned this already, there hasn't been a strategic plan. There needs to be one in place, and this needs to be a priority as part of that strategic plan. Also, the school committee has yearly goal setting, so it needs to be part of the yearly goals that the school committee sets. I believe we're about to go into a superintendent search. I think there's a decision on that happening tomorrow to initiate the search. So whoever's on the school committee to come in January will be part of that hiring process, and, you know, we will be able to request of the superintendent candidate if they are, if they have experience with raising the proficiency levels in reading and other experience that we need specifically for our district.
Great, thank you. Mr. Maggie Aketti, what investment of resources in early reading do you believe is needed and affordable for Haverhill?
Well, I believe that investments in early reading is affordable. I think we can always invest in additional reading specialists in the schools. Like I said, we have to make the connections with the students. I also think that we can invest in some digital technology that we can reach the parents at home that may have access to a laptop, a computer, almost every home has that, so even on a phone, a mobile device with certain apps, you can get, you have to make the connection between the school and the home, and some of that can be done at little and no expense with all the modern apps and the different online features that we have. So that's one of the ways that we can do it. And then we get the reading, like I said, the reading specialists in the schools. We've done this historically, but you need to really attack the problem. You have to make the connection between the school and the home, and the best way to do that is to hire social workers in the schools at every level that can reach out and find out what the strengths of the homes are, as was spoken of earlier, and hit those strengths and get the kids reading by grade three.
Great, thank you. Ms. Hobbs Everett, how can the school committee best work with the school administration to achieve better academic improvement? What are your specific suggestions?
My suggestion will fall back on family engagement. I really believe strongly that that's the core of changing the way that we operate in our schools. Family engagement is not having an activity where you, again, go in and tell the parents or offer the parent suggestions, but where you actually ask the parents what works best in their homes, and we have to build from there. So to pretend as if we can sit here and make up solutions without engaging with the families and the students directly will create systems that will not work, and I feel like that's what we've done historically, is overlooked the expertise that's in the homes of the parents. I was a social worker. I have spent 20 years in the field of human services, and so I can tell you, as the person that goes into the homes, that works with the families, that it's more than just my going in and trying to teach tools, it's tapping into the strengths of that family and then harnessing that. That's what makes a family stable, not people just going in pointing out the problems in the house.
Great, thank you. Ms. Ryan Siradello, what changes are needed in the budget and budget process to better ensure allocations to early literacy improvement is adequate?
We need, I think that we need to find more funding through grants is key, and we need to make sure we do, and I'm proud to say, as my first term as a school committee member, going line by line on the budget and knowing where to allocate money and the important versus things that can be eliminated. And as a former Haverhill Public School teacher, and as well as I worked with the family literacy program in the Haverhill School Department, which helped educate single parents towards getting their GED, and they would bring in their younger children, infants up to preschool age. So that was a grant-funded program, so, and it worked, and I, as well as Ms. Hobbs Everett, worked in the homes. I did home visits, and I agree with her that it's not just about pointing out what to do. I sat down and I read with them, and so finding more money and funding through grants would be key to getting that.
Thank you. Mr. Rosa, will you make improvement in early reading proficiency a factor in the performance review of Haverhill's school superintendent?
I think it should be. This is critical for a number of reasons. I mean, the topics we're discussing tonight all fit in very nicely. You know, we, you know, we talked about the high school dropout rate already. We've already discussed that, you know, literacy and being able to read at grade level by 3rd grade is a factor in reducing that dropout rate. So these are important things, and the superintendent should be held responsible for that as part of his review. But ultimately, you know, the buck stops with the school committee, and we can't, you know, pass that off on anyone else. I think that, so, so yes, to answer your question, that should be something that should be part of the review. And how the superintendent expands opportunities for literacy is part of that. For example, we have an excellent summer reading program at the YMCA here in Haverhill where children going into 3rd grade are in this program, and they're showing signs of increasing their reading ability. That should be a program that we should partner with as a school system and expand it, like they have in Salem, Massachusetts with the YMCA.
Thank you again to the candidates for responding to the second issue. The third issue here is professional development, and the questions are going to be asked back and forth between Joanna and Tom. Tom, the, let me frame that for a minute. Haverhill spends less on teacher professional development as a percentage of school budget and per people. and per pupil than many other similar districts. Some research studies have shown little relationship of general professional development spending to student achievement. However, multiple studies have affirmed the effectiveness of coaching teachers on an ongoing basis as a professional development tool. So Joanna, you will be starting with the questions?
All right. So, Mr. Magliacetti, we're going to start with you. All right, in what areas do you see needs for professional development of Haverhill teachers?
Change the tone of your voice when you said my name that time. Look, I think when it comes to professional development, again, you have to look at the classroom. I don't think it's one size fits all. You can go to any school in the city, we have so many, and every different classroom is going to have a slightly different dynamic. And you really have to find professional development programs that are for the particular students in the class. So I think one thing that I would look for in our professional development program is more feedback from the teachers and offer different professional development programs with teachers in the same building. In other words, don't just have one program as a professional development program and have all the teachers come. Some might need it, some might not, some might need a variation of it. So you have to make sure while you're offering it, maybe you offer multiple models of that particular professional development, so that it's more tailored to the teacher and her particular classroom. That's one thing I would really like to see, and I think that's something that wouldn't cost a lot and something we could achieve.
Great, thank you. We're going to go this way. Mr. Smith, do you believe teachers value or burdened by professional development activities? What types of professional development is most needed by teachers in Haverhill?
Well, as a teacher, I have been subject to poorly planned professional development, and I've heard the complaints in the faculty lounge, and, you know, they call it the flavor of the month. And that's when there is not a plan, the professional development is not aligned to a strategic plan, and they're just doing it because they're supposed to do it. And the need is to have a plan for how to do this. So, you know, there's lots of specific recommendations in the DESI report for what needs to be done. There's just so many, there's too many to go into in the minute here. As Paul was suggesting, they talked about job-embedded professional development for high-quality teaching, that was one. They talked about having formal professional development for the leveled libraries reading program that we have instituted, but we haven't actually followed through on. So, more to say in the solution part.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rosa, do Haverhill teachers need additional training or coaching in skills and methods to better meet the needs of the Haverhill's increasingly diverse student population?
Yes. You know, I've talked to a number of teachers, I've spoken with a number of teachers about this subject, and there's several themes that come up in these conversations. One is that the teachers feel like, first of all, they appreciate good professional development, but they feel like it's very inconsistent. They also feel like they don't have a lot of say in their professional development, and that results in professional development that sometimes is not relevant or isn't really geared towards, you know, measurable goals and planned goals. So, the, what they want is to be part of the process of getting, of choosing professional development, and in the case of students with, you know, special needs or socioeconomic, you know, disadvantaged students, those things too are things that I'm sure they will appreciate and that they could use, but it has to be consistent, there has to be a plan. It can't just be this quick-hit, drive-by, disconnected type of professional development.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ryan Ciradello, do you believe professional development is needed to help teachers meet new content standards that require teachers to integrate higher-order thinking and social-emotional learning into the curriculum?
Absolutely. That teachers do need this. There needs to be more funding, like we've said already, towards professional development for teachers. I think that we need to speak to the teachers directly, per grade level, school, elementary, high school, and find out what the teacher observations are and what their data is from what they're seeing, what their students' needs are. And with that being said, that's where it should be focused at. It shouldn't be a one-for-all program, like with any profession, that you need to continue to keep up with your learning and growth, and without that, you're not going to be able to spread that on to your own students. So, without it, it's going to be, it's unfortunate for our students, so we need to work harder into pursuing more ways to find funding to help the teachers.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Hobbs Everett, a recent study by professors at Brown and Harvard Universities identified critical features for professional development program, including job embedded practice, intense and sustained durations, a focus on discrete skill sets, and active learning. Do you believe Haverhill has in place the administrative and academic resources to implement and maintain such an active professional development program along these lines?
Currently, no, but I do feel that it's something that can be developed. Feedback there. I think that by tapping into the community resources is a way that we can increase professional development at a low cost. I do think the capacity exists within the community, and certainly within neighboring communities with all the great colleges and universities that we have. I'm sure there's a way to tap into doing that at a low cost, but as it stands today, no, I don't think that the district has the capacity to do that at such an aggressive level.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to turn now to questions related to the solution on this problem. Richard Smith, how will you ensure Haverhill provides adequate funding for professional development?
Well, it was mentioned how the per-people spending has dropped. I mean, it was about $200 in 2012, it dropped to about $100 last year, and this year, it is $4 per student, which is unbelievable. So, you know, I was witness to the budget fight, trying to get more money, and, I mean, this just has to be a priority. I mean, if you read the DESI report, it is riddled with the need for professional development in all these various ways. And if we're going to fund it at $4, that puts us at the very bottom of the whole state in terms of per-people spending. Is that where we want to be? I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you. Richard Rosa, will you ask the superintendent to provide specific plans and justification for professional development in next year's proposed budget? If so, what will you ask to see?
Well, like I said before, one of the frustrations with teachers is that they, they don't feel like the professional development is consistent. They don't think that they have much input in it, they don't think it's often relevant. They want to have more of a say in their professional development, so we need to have a plan. One of the things that almost every teacher told me was they weren't able to really identify who's even in charge of professional development in Haverhill. And that was also a frustration. So, we need to have a plan, the superintendent needs to identify what exactly is going to be done, or whoever, whether it's the superintendent or someone that he delegates that job to, has to, you know, let us know what is the plan for professional development going forward. And another thing that's, I think, important to mention is I recently read an article where they talked about a survey of teachers, and one of the things that new teachers, teachers who were practicing, who were in teaching for less than five years, said that was one of the most important professional development thing that they received was mentoring, and that that was also something that was, resulted in retaining teachers. So I think that, I've talked to teachers about mentoring, and they say that that also is sort of disconnected and not very consistent.
Okay, thank you. Maura Ryan Ciradello, do you support a substantial line item in the budget for professional development from general funds not dependent on grants? Why or why not?
Absolutely. As a former teacher myself, public school teacher, and with three young boys that are in the Haverhill Public School system, teacher professional development is key. Again, like I stated before, without the proper resources provided to the teachers, they're not going to get the correct resources to our students to get them to graduate. So it all follows from one to the next. I do believe that without grant funding, that yes, there should absolutely be money taken from the budget that we have and put into the teacher resources for professional development, and it should be a lot more than it has been in the past. And it was, it's unfortunate that we have not had the funds, but I hope to be able to continue to work to find ways to work within the budget to get the, you know, proper money, to get the teachers the resources needed.
Thank you. Katrina Hobbs Everett, as a school committee member, how will you decide how much should be in the budget for professional development?
I think, again, that that is a process that should be done by a team and not one sole person, so it's a difficult question to answer. I think I picked a not-so-great letter, but I think that, you know, by working with the teachers, the administrators, and again, the families, because professional development is to be able to help teachers to properly educate students, right? You have to have your finger on the pulse of what is going on, and so that's not something that I would be able to even guess right now, or pretend like I could guess that answer right now, so.
Great, thank you. And Paul Magliacetti, how do you believe the school committee can best assess the effectiveness and monitor the progress of professional development and teacher coaching programs?
Well, we're always given the quote-unquote "data." It's, I do it myself by visiting the classrooms. Like I said, I believe that's the best way to do it. I've actually been in the schools during professional development programs, being taught to the teachers. I talk to the teachers, I get input from them, and then I'll be informed, that we get notified when there are certain professional development programs taking place. I try to visit a school soon after that happens to meet with teachers, to kind of view the classroom and see what's going on. I always feel that's the best way to do it, but at the end of the day, it's all in the numbers, and we're held to this standard with the data, and so we have to do a little bit of both. We have to go in the classrooms, see how the teachers are implementing the professional development strategies, see how the students are responding, and then we get a look at the data to make sure that they're responding in a way that everyone's held accountable and that we're scoring high enough to get our school rankings up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That ends the formal part of the questioning part of the program, and I want to thank Dr. Graneman and Joanna Dix for developing those questions and for putting up the format for this part of the program. We're now moving to the part where the candidates will be given two minutes each to do a closing statement to summarize your position on the education issues, and to give it, vote is an opportunity to get more insight into what you're, what you're thinking about as a candidate. So, you want to start on the end here with, or do you?
Your turn.
Why don't we start at this end and go back that way, okay?
Thank you, everyone, for listening. A lot of the things we talked about today, all these solutions, they cost money. And although we need to continue to fund our schools at a high level, money's not unlimited. And whether you think that our $79 million budget is too much, too little, or just right, we could all agree on this, that we need to have a more transparent budget process. In 2017, public comment on the school committee budget was done after the school committee passed the budget. We could do better than that, and we need to have more transparency. Transparency is not about pointing fingers or placing blame, it's about having more sets of eyes on the budget so that we could find efficiencies, because there are, without question, efficiencies in a $79 million budget. It's, you know, I'm running for the Haverhill School Committee because, you know, I care about our schools, I care about our students, and I care about our city, and I want to help. It's, you know, these issues that we've talked about tonight are not going to be easy to solve, it's going to take a lot of work. I've never been afraid of work, okay? I've worked my whole life. I got my first paper route at 10 years old. I put myself through Northeastern University, I went to law school at night while I worked during the day. I started a law practice right after I passed the bar. I started a real estate company 12 years ago that is right here on Merrimack Street. I'm not afraid of work, and I will work hard. If given the opportunity to serve, I will promise that I will, I will listen, I will learn, I will work as hard as anybody, and I will never let politics get in the way of doing what's best for students, teachers, and taxpayers. Thank you again for listening, and please consider me on November 7th for Haverhill School Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Mr. Smith?
So my first granddaughter was born six months ago, and we had a chance to visit her at two months, and I bought her her first book. Now, there wasn't much she could do with it, she could hardly sit up. But I mention this because a lot of the students we have in our system don't have an enriched environment like that, they don't have enriched reading. A lot of homes, I mentioned already, have no reading material at all in them. And these are the students that we have the challenge of educating, and we need to educate every single student who's in front of us. I mean, that is the great radical idea of American education. I think we need, as a district, to believe that we can grow, we can do better. We need to have a growth mindset as a district, and we also have to instill this in our students, that there is not innate intelligence, that if you work hard, you can improve yourself and achieve and get better. Thank you for hosting this event, Haverhill Education Coalition, and especially thank you for the event that you put on back in March. And personally, for me, that was the tipping point in terms of getting involved with the school committee. And it was specifically when Dina Papannicolo talked about being ashamed that she waited to get involved until the hunking disaster. And at that point, I was ashamed for not being more involved in the schools, because I have direct experience as an educator, I'm a 30-year career educator, I'm in the public schools now. I also have experience as a parent, my kids went through the whole system here in Haverhill. And so I can be of unique service to the school committee, given my professional and personal experience. So I'm hoping that you will vote for me. Please vote for me on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Magliacetti?
Paul Magliacetti, and I hope that I've earned your vote on the November 7th ballot. I've been on for two terms, this is going to be my third term if I get elected. I'm a proud member of the school committee. I believe in professional development, I believe in cooperation among our schools, community groups, to help with our dropout rate, and I believe in investing in childhood education. During my term, I helped develop an all-day kindergarten program for all of our students. When I first got on, we did not have that. I've helped fix accounting problems so that we don't run into budget deficits throughout the year. I developed the last strategic plan that we have in place that now needs to be replaced again. During the process of developing the strategic plan, I helped introduce foreign languages in our middle schools at little and no cost to the district. Currently, last year, we introduced a life skills program at the high school, and we're currently in the process of redeveloping the administration of the Special Education Department. We have a thriving early college program at Haverhill High School, and we've developed close working relationships with Whittier-Otech and Northern Essex Community College to give our high school students vocational opportunities that they wouldn't have otherwise. And I proudly voted for the solar projects at Haverhill High School and Tilton School, which would have generated an estimated $150,000 a year in additional revenues for the schools. I will work hard to invest in professional development for all teachers and staff. I will work hard to invest in early childhood education, such as preschool, reading specialists, and community outreach. I will work hard to invest in social workers in our schools and develop closer working relationships with our local nonprofits. I'm Paul Magliacetti, and I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Magliacetti. Katrina Hobbs Everett?
Katrina Hobbs Everett, I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th. So, I am so grateful for this opportunity to be here. I am grateful for the formation and the platform that HEC has given, issues that I've been an advocate for, for a long time in this community. When I ran for city council two years ago, I was talking about the dropout rate, I was talking about gang violence, I was talking about the school-to-prison pipeline, I was talking about issues that the majority of people here in the city that have attended forums did not know what I was talking about. So I'm grateful to see that these issues now coming to light. What I'm asking is for a seat at the table, so that there is a balanced perspective, somebody who knows the community, somebody who knows the issues, somebody who has struggled with things with her own home of being a low-income mom, and that's not something that I'm ashamed of. So to say, you know, the reasons why I'm running, there are several, but the majority of the reason of why I'm running, it's because of the youth in the city, it's because of the family in the city. My motto is "Moving Forward, United." Haverhill does have a fragmented community. There is an equity issue that goes on within our schools, and I feel like it is time for us to stop ignoring these issues. It is time for us to stop sweeping things under the rug. It is time for us to stop pretending as if everyone in this room makes up the diversity of what is in this community, and it does not. So I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th, and I hope, look forward to "Moving Forward, United." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mara Ryan Ciradello?
Thank you. My name is Mara Ryan Ciradello, and as a lifelong resident of Haverhill and a proud graduate of Haverhill High School, I am, again, my three sons are also students at the Haverhill Public School System. They attend three different schools. So I see firsthand, not only as a former public school teacher in the Haverhill School System, but I'm seeing it as a parent, as well as a school committee. So I'm seeing all aspects of it. As a first-term member, this, completing my first term, I want to continue to be on the committee to find more funding for all the topics that we just discussed, because there, it's crucial that we have this implemented and we find the funding and the proper resources for our teachers and for our students. Again, as a proud graduate of Haverhill High School, just going back with the opening, I just wanted to say I was, I received my bachelor's degree from Salem State College, and I attended University College Quoic in Ireland for summer study programs, and then I got my master's degree from Cambridge College. But as a single mother of three small children, I truly believe in education begins at home. And with that, I want to continue to work with parents and teachers and the community to find out ways and hear input from them, to continually gain input from them, on how to better go about making our schools do better and perform better. I think that we're a great community, we have a wonderful school system, we have a lot of children coming, students and coming from outside, coming here because we provide excellent services. Can we do better? Yes, everybody can. With that being said, I respectfully ask for your vote on November 7th to the Haverhill School Committee. Thank you very much to all of you.
Thank you, and I apologize for the errors that I mentioned earlier. I guess you, I guess everything on the internet isn't accurate?
No, it's not.
Is that true? Okay.
Not always true.
So I looked it up and made some mistakes on that, I apologize for that. The audience has been very, very quiet tonight, but I think it's time that the candidates get a round of applause for the time they spent. So thank you to all of you for participating in this forum this evening, and thank you also to Dr. Graneman and Joanna Dix for the, putting together the questions and the format for this evening. I want to again thank the Haverhill Education Coalition and the Haverhill Education Foundation for cosponsoring this event, and also again thanking HC Media for hosting it here. This is a great site. And as I mentioned earlier, this is being broadcast live on the cable station, it is also being streamed live on the internet, so thank you for that. The other thing I want to note, and let you know, is there is another candidate, city council candidate forum hosted by the League of Women Voters, and it's being sponsored by them on October 23rd from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Haverhill High School. So I encourage people to attend that event and get a good opportunity to see the candidates who are running for city council. So again, thank you to everyone that's coming here tonight, has come here, a great studio audience, as well as the people at home that have been watching this. I should note that we also, candidates are going to be staying around for a little bit, and we've got some refreshments here, so please stay around, take advantage of the refreshments, and speak with the candidates for a few minutes. So thank you very much, and good evening.